We are calling the meeting to order. Attendance, roll call.
Present.
Dusty Reeves. Dusty Buffalo. Dusty Adams. Dusty Harvey.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Are there any public comments for closed session?
No ma'am.
Thank you. We are adjourning to closed session.
We are calling this meeting back to order. Attendants?
trustee Rivera?
Here.
trustee Gaines?
President.
trustee Reeves?
Here.
trustee Buffalo?
Here.
trustee Adams?
Here.
trustee Harvey?
Here.
We have a call.
Mr. Please pledge allegiance.
I'll please rise, take the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now to eight. Approval of the meeting agenda. May I have a?
Some of.
Second.
Dean trustee Rivera?
Approved.
trustee Gaines?
Approved.
trustee Reeves?
Aye.
trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
trustee Adams?
Aye.
trustee Harvey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Report of closed session. The report out is 4.1 was pulled. It was a placeholder. 4.2, evaluation of the superintendent president. There is no report. 4.3 was also pulled. It was also a placeholder. We are now to comment. For Board Policy Number 2350. Public minutes be limited to three minutes per person. All speakers who would like to comment regarding the matter on the agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or the recording secretary before the point in the meeting which the agenda item is called. Public comment cards are available at the information table in the middle of the theater from the recording secretary or we have four. That's four. Thank you. Uh-uh. We still can't hear you Pamela. Hold on a second. Sounds like.
So before I begin, Bridgette, don't start your little clock. I just want to say, um, I understand today is the anniversary of your birth. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. Watch and learn. Okay. Um, now I'm going to talk about Gary Cook. Last month retirees were celebrated and I just wanted Gary to have his moment. So my husband's grandmother used to say, honey, she would say that to all of us. Send me my flowers while I can smell them. Tonight, Gary, I'm sending you your flowers. Do this statement concerning you as a worker, a colleague, and now your retirement. And I truly hope you receive every petal. Gary's retirement was announced and the bloom of Gary's career began at Antelope Valley College as a student worker in 2003 and then quickly became a tutor in the learning center. In 2007, his career blossomed when he accepted a full-time classified position as a computer lab technician in the learning center. He was then promoted to the position of computer services technician. And his last position, again a promotion, was a system administrator, which he remained in until his retirement. Prior to COVID, I had the privilege of working with Gary on occasion when he would stop by my office to fix or update something on my computer. And he was always pleasant and easy to work with. However, during COVID is when I really came to know Gary and gained an appreciation for him as an individual. What stood out most was his effortless and endless patience. And I reached out to him more than other texts because he was so customer service oriented. Gary demonstrated the patience of Job, especially when it comes to me and technology. You could ask him to walk you through the same process again and again. And he would, without a snipe or gripe, go over it. He had a knack for meeting people where they were as far as computer skill levels were concerned. What flourished most about Gary is how he often and without fail spoke of his mother. And it was impressive how dedicated he is to her and how mindful he is of her needs. It saddened me when I learned when Gary had to retire early due to health reasons. I admired his courage as he struggled miserably to come to work and perform his duties. Again, his commitment to his, his mom. His work commitment came first. When I realized the state of health he was in, unbeknownst to him, I initiated a call to HR to seek immediate assistance for him. I had a moment of pause because I feared his displeasure at my interceding to help him. But I pushed, I pursued help for him anyway and hoped he would understand. Without hesitation, Dr. Helsper leaped into action to seek assistance for Gary. I think we all understood he never would have initiated this assistance for himself. Gary demonstrated what a rare individual he was. When upon realizing what I had done, he called me immediately and thanked me profusely for my assistance. And then upon his decision to retire, he contacted me, thanking me again for reaching out to HR and getting him the help he needed. That was Gary. There was no anger nor bitterness, just appreciation for my and Dr. Helsper's assistance. Gary served this college and the campus community well. Gary served this college and the campus community well. And on behalf of classified, I wish him a bouquet of good health and all the best to him as he moves into his new phase of his life in retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, here at eleven point one presentation intercollegiate athletics.
Good evening, Dr. Zellup, members of the board. Before I begin my presentation this evening, I would like to recognize two student athletes for their athletic achievements. First is Cody Turner and he'll be introduced by head baseball coach, Dr. Brian Moses.
Thank you. Hope everybody's doing great. I appreciate the invite from Dr. Partee to be here today with Cody Turner. I'm a little bit taller, so I'm going to try to get, if I can. I first found out about Cody Turner. He had played here, I'm sorry, he's from the community. He went to Cal State Bakersfield. But I had heard he was back in town and I had heard that he was setting records at slow pitch softball games. So I went to discover what he was doing and I was so impressed. At that point, he had been ignoring my calls. I told him that if he ignored me today, that I would, I'd beat him in the parking lot and I wouldn't let him drive home. So now Cody Turner is a member of our program and he has been remarkable. His numbers statistically were astronomical, the best statistics in the state, in my opinion. He went, I don't know if I mentioned it, he went to Pete Knight High School, which makes him a local product, which we're extremely proud of. But beyond that, he became a better teammate. He became a better person. He became a leader and he's someone who has connected with me and I just really appreciate his presence. And um, I'm not sure if he'll speak tonight. I know he's very shy, but if you can get him to at least stand up, Cody Turner, just remarkable. Thank you. If he doesn't speak, it's not out of rudeness, he's just a very, very quiet individual. Thank you for the invite and I'm proud to be here.
Thank you, Dr. Moses. And we would actually like to invite Cody and Dr. Moses and Dr. Partee to the stage. We have for you an acknowledgement of your player of the year award. And so if the board would come up and President Harvey, if you would give the award.
Okay.
Just to follow up with Coach Moses. Cody was not only the Western State Conference Player of the Year, but he was also the California Community College Baseball Coaches Association Player of the Year, which is an amazing honor. Congratulations, Cody. Our next student athlete is going to be introduced by our men's and women's cross-country coach and men's and women's track and field coach, Coach Anthony Beany. And the student athlete is Kayla Thompson. Kayla.
Thank you very much for having me here this evening. It's a great honor. I've been doing this a long time. Sometime around the Lincoln administration, I think I was still in track. And I've had All-Americans, I've had world champions. I've had young people compete at the Olympic level, the world championship level, the world junior level, Pan-American Games. And it never gets old seeing kids perform at a very high level, even when they faced obstacles. In twenty twenty-one, I took over the track and field program. And during a practice during halfway through the semester, a young lady was introduced to me and I recognized her because I knew of her accolades as a young junior in high school. She was one of the fastest girls in the southern section of the state. And she had had a baby and had come back, beautiful little girl named Emma, who is terrorizing the Lancaster-Palm Dale area as we speak. And she came out and in her first year back, she was second. She was our conference champion at four hundred meters, second at two hundred meters, was an All-American in four events at the state meet with only five girls representing Antelope Valley College. We placed tenth out of forty-one competing community colleges. That showed the depth, Kayla was second. She took a year off to take care of her child and her academics. And she was terrified that she wasn't going to be able to come to track practice. And I told her, I was born on the west coast, but I was raised by southerners. So my Virginian blood came through from my grandmother, grandfather always telling me, if you chase two rabbits, you don't catch either one. And so I told her, take care of Emma, take care of your grades. She came back last fall, was conference champion again, runner-up again in the two hundred meters. She was Southern California champion, even though she had the fastest time. And she was caught ten meters from the finish line. And after the meet was over, we were standing getting something to eat. She says, Coach, are you, are you disappointed in me? And I said, no, I couldn't be. She says, no, you got a choice. Okay, you got second today. Wouldn't you rather be the state champ than the Southern Cal champ? She said, yeah, that sounds much better. And she won the title and she's the third fastest four hundred meter runner in school history. She's one of the top four two hundred meter runners and she ran her, only her second eight hundred meters and she ranks number ten in the events. So I'm extremely proud of the grit, understanding that the community college experience has so much to offer for her. And I thank the support from Dr. Partee and my assistant coach, Dr. Zellet, who always seems to come, she is, she's Johnny on the spot coming to all of our, our events. And it's been, it's been a great ride to see someone. I'm going to miss her. I was hoping there was some way I could, you know, change her social security number, her student ID number. Get her out for another couple of years, but she's been, she's been an amazing, she's been an amazingly dedicated individual and young lady to be able to balance all the things that she has to do. And it's, it's not easy because I've been in the business, I've seen young women and young men under these, this kind of pressure, never come back. And she's got somewhere almost a half a dozen scholarship offers. And she's dedicated to her academics and dedicated to her academics being something that Emma can achieve. And look, so I just wanted to have Kayla.
Hi. I just wanted to first and foremost, say thank you all for having me. It's a great honor. Wanted to say thank you to my coach. Without him, this wouldn't be possible, just remaining my faith and remaining strong. And he's always taught me to just show up, show out and trust the training, trust yourself and like always trust God. So that's who I'm going to give my thanks to is my coach. Just fighting for my little girl and I hope to continue my academics here in the fall, get my degree and move on to bigger and better things. So I thank you all for the support and for this opportunity.
Let's give Kayla a round of applause. And Kayla, before you sit, could your coach come to the stage and we take a picture? I would love that. And the rest of the board, please join me. Kayla, you may not know it, but I used to be a sprinter. Come on up.
As Kayla and Coach are coming to the stage, I just want word to know that we are in Marauder Complex One, going to have the Hall of Success. So all of these plaques will be hung in the Marauder Complex. We have two other state individuals. Arlene Salvador was our state women's golf champion. And we also have Kami Nelson, who was the Cal Hope Courage and Athletic State Award. So those will all be hung in Marauder Complex One. We're going to call it the Hall of Success. The wall.
Thank you.
What you're going to see tonight is how student athletes, both academically and athletically are doing. In my, they're absolutely crushed. We crushed it this year. As you can see, well, about sixteen programs participated in postseason competition, allowing one hundred sixty student athletes to experience postseason competition. Anyone ever coached, actually heated postseason, intensity goes up tenfold. And it's, it's the drive of the coach and the team that can, a lot of times it's wanting. And what's really great about this is that out of the hundred and sixty student athletes, the majority of them are first-year student athletes. So this experience is going to help them move on for the next year when we go to postseason again. Hopefully it'll be sixteen out of sixteen. Conference awards, we had fifty-four student athletes across sixteen programs receive first-team all-conference. Academic all-conference, this is mind-boggling. We had a hundred and sixty-one of our student athletes on the all-conference, Western State Conference team. Quite a. Okay. The result of that is basically one of the initiatives that we started this year was the Student-Athlete Academic Achievement Zone. We're mandated that all student athletes are required to attend four hours per week to the. This would come to fruition if it wasn't for Ashley Hawkins and Josh, both real proponents of the achievement zone. And they helped procure thirty-six laptops, printer, and we added tutors into the center. And the next slide will blow your. This all happened if it wasn't for the support of our coaches and the coaches believing in the achievement zone. And the next slide, these are our GPAs across the sport. Every single program increased their GPA by more than point oh four, which is, you just look at the numbers and it's amazing what this facility has done. The only problem is now is without growing the space that we started the achievement zone. I didn't imagine that this would grow as quickly as it has grown. So Ashley and myself and Josh, we have a plan and we're hoping that they're going to be happy when my car goes down the hill with all the changes that we're making. So I'm just missing fruition for the fall semester because it is the place where the, Dr. Zellup said this in one of the discussions, students have a tendency to just, in close proximity, they want to go someplace, they're not going to walk across campus, especially if they're in the complex and they go across that parking lot. If the car's parked right there, they have a tendency to say, well, I'll study tomorrow night or the next night. But with the complex right there, they have it, you go in and do what they're supposed to do those four. And it's been amazing what those four hours have done for our student athletes in the complex right there in front of you. All of this wouldn't have happened if we didn't have our athletic academic counselor in Complex One. For two number one students are always around the complex, they can meet with Tisha. The second, it's a great recruiting tool. Mom and dad come with their student athletes and they're, they're automatically shoveled into a counseling appointment and they learn about their ed plan. Really helped us in recruiting. The two adjunct athletic counselors and the clerical support. I really want to thank Dr. Rashida Brown-Lee for her support in this. This wouldn't have happened if it wasn't for her saying yes to this request that came out of my office. Tisha, an amazing counselor, provides all of our student athletes with a comprehensive educational plan for both their freshman year and sophomore year. She is key to holding our student athletes' feet to the fire when it comes to making sure whatever their major is, that the courses that they're taking are going to help them leave the college. She's also nominated our baseball team, three point four six average for the state achievement, academic achievement award, which is unbelievable. Baseball, there's forty-plus student athletes on that team to come with a three point four six. Sixty-four student athletes are transferring out of the board. These are student athletes, these are not all our transfers. These are just student athletes that have either received a scholarship, partial scholarship, or been, or been allowed to enter the college of their choice due to their athletic ability. And so it's, it's been fantastic to see what's been going on in our, with transfers moving on. This is another initiative that we started this year as well, the early. In the old days, our student athletes would take a piece of paper around to the stu, to the faculty and the faculty would sign off. And it just was cumbersome and it was really, really, and I thought, hey, we're in twenty-first century. We need to move on. So we started, thanks to Kimberly Covell. She designed a program, an in-house program that uses not only banner nine, but also a constant contact. Little cumbersome, but you know, we're in the process of looking at other possibilities. But this without, I mean, we asked the faculty three questions. Well, the first thing we asked the faculty that if a student's doing well, you don't do anything. Carry, that's week six. We asked questions, is the student attending? Is the student passing your class? And if not, what support services can we give them? What blew me away at Antelope Valley College was the faculty response to use early alert. Ninety-two percent of the faculty responded back to us, telling us this is what these student athletes need, both the sixth week as well as the tenth week. To me, that's an amazing number. Other institutions I've worked at was maybe eighty, eighty-two. But it just showed me that these, the faculty members of this institution really care about all of their students. So that was a wonderful initiative that, that will carry on. This was one of my most favorite. The Student-Athlete Advisory Council, where in the fall, we have sixteen student athletes. In the spring, we have sixteen student athletes and they're all mentioned there. Two leaders of the program that the coach selects to meet with me and Cindy Vargas, my assistant athletic director, once a month at lunchtime. And that's going to be a big draw with the pizza and whatever we were feeding them that day. But. what came from those meetings and the key point was, this is not a complaint session about your coach. This is about how do we make our programs better from an administrative standpoint? And the response we received from our athletes was absolutely amazing. But the most important to this is that we followed up with their concern. We addressed their concerns. And they very appreciated it. So in the spring, we had a great turnout as well. So these were some of the best meetings I've ever attended. Students were felt empowered. They felt that they were heard, and we followed up. It's interesting now is they call this SAC. And now we are one of the leaders of a student advisory council. Most of the schools don't have such a beast, and we do. And so we've been invited, I've been invited to speak at C two A conferences about the success of our Student-Athlete Advisory Council. So, it's been a great initiative. Events. The golf tournament. Everybody asked me, how much money did you, how much money did you raise? And it wasn't about raising money for me this year because we skipped a year last year. We didn't have a tournament. So for me, it was all about fundraising or friend raising. I wanted to bring it, get it going. And it was a very successful tournament. And we've really garnered a lot of great commitment that we put on. I have to thank Byron Devers, Jerry Legaman, and Danielle Harris for making sure that tournament went smoothly. Next was the Hall of Fame, which I think most of you have heard about. Huge success. I really appreciate the board members that were there. And I want to thank Steve Buffalo for emceeing the event. It was, it was a little long, but we're going to shorten it up this year and we'll do a little better job with that. Student Athlete Retreat was a great retreat. All of our student athletes were invited to the retreat. Mr. David Watts addressed our student athletes. A great address. Basically, it was about preparing for your academic or athletic success and academic success now while you're playing sport. And what do you do after post-sport? And it was really well-received by our student athletes. And a great event that will continue on. I came up with the idea of a Thanksgiving dinner due to the fact that we, a lot of our students were either international students or out-of-area students, and they had nowhere to go. It wasn't as well-attended as I hoped it would be. But the concept was there. And Dr. Phil Zimmerman and myself, we want to carry on with this. So next Thanksgiving, we hope, we want to do it again and hopefully promote it better than it was promoted. We started getting concessions now at all home games. We charge to come into the gates and we do a great job in those concession stands. When I came here, spider webs were all over them. I couldn't believe they didn't use the concession stands. So we're doing it and we're doing really well. And we're really happy with the proceed. See. Last piece. As a kinesiology department, I'm really proud of our staff. Implemented thirty-three new courses. Every from pickleball to e-sport. And I want to focus on e-sport a little because I know it's dear to someone's heart here on the board. I know that there's a, every high school has an e-sport team. It is becoming a huge inter- sport now. Now, C two A won't recognize it, but that's not going to stop me from this year at least implementing here because I know there's a club and I've reached out to the club advisor to see what we can do to make it an intercollegiate sport and compete against colleges or even the high schools if we have to at this point in time. But it'll be a great feeder program. And because if we offer this, we're going to be one of the few community colleges to offer e-sport for our. And that was some of the thirty-three courses, just pickleball, kettle, I mean, it's going to just grow. And I don't know if you've seen this beyond facilities, our Life Fitness Center is a phenomenal facility. And Patty can attest to that. Tennis, pickleball complex now, softball complex. All of these would not have happened without your approval. And let me tell you, our student athletes and our community appreciate it very, very much. And I want to thank Ron Bededetti and Shami because this would not have happened with Ron and Shami because I think Shami and Ron are really tired of seeing me come to their offices begging for or letting them know. But the one thing that is going to come out of this is when I do go down the hill, that Shami will have a, a well-made out plan for our facilities. So it's not going to happen again where personally coming in asking for large money to upgrade or fix these facilities because they, there was. That's it. Any questions?
All right.
Members, do you have any questions? I just wanted to say, I think it's absolutely phenomenal, the focus that athletics has on academics. I appreciate the graph to show the different groups and how they perform. And also, I think the growth in women's basketball as well as men's track and field is exponential. Whoever is tutoring those groups is doing a phenomenal job. So I just appreciate the presence of both athletics and academics. It shows your head and the program's head is in the right place. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now eleven-two presentation of Measure AV Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report.
We have today Mr. Mark Hem Street, who's the chair of our Measure AV Citizens Oversight Committee. He will be presenting the Measure AV Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report to the board. We're grateful to Mr. Hem Street and the entire Measure AV Citizens Oversight Committee for the work that they've done to help ensure that Measure AV expenses are in accordance with Measure AV ballot language. Thank you, Mark. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, President Zellit, Board President Harvey, and trustees. And I appreciate Bridget, the only one that I saw there, always wearing the attorney hat as our athletes came up here. Who is the one person saying, watch your step? Watch your step. Risk management, always top of priority there. So I always appreciate that. The Oversight Committee has determined that Measure AV funds have been used in full compliance with Article thirteen A of the California State Constitution and for projects identified in Measure AV, and that no bond pre, no bond proceeds were used unlawfully for teacher or administrative salaries. This annual report to the board, as is a requirement of Prop thirteen, as mentioned, and no board bond funds were used for the publication and distribution of this document. As of February of twenty-twenty-four, our expenditures have been two-hundred-and-fifty-six million, two-hundred-and-eight-hundred-and-eighty dollars. Audit reports for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three confirmed that there were no audit findings and that money was spent in compliance with Measure AV bond ballot. Multiple bond projects have been completed. As we walk around the campus, we see that every day. More are being completed as the days go on. Some of the things that have been completed are the Palmdale Center expansion was completed at a cost of six, and I'll round these out to the nearest thousand. Six million, two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand. Our central plant, Solar Palmdale Payoff, was completed at a cost of twenty-five thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty, or twenty-five million, seven-hundred-and-eighty thousand. Student Services Buildings completed, forty-six million, two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand. Swing Space One completed at nine million, seven-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand. Campus Security Building completed with eight million, seven-hundred-and-two thousand dollars. Campus Infrastructure completed at twenty-three million, two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand. Rock Complex, Marauder Field House, completed at twelve million, two-hundred-and-four thousand. Sage Hall completed at twenty-seven million, seven-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand dollars. Discovery Lab completed at twenty-six million, two thousand dollars. Swing Space Two completed, six million, nine-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand. Outdoor Fitness Center completed at five-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars. Our G twelve thirtieth main entrance is on the books, partially completed. We need to move some money around, I'll tell them that. That was at a cost of a million, five-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars. Theater Hall is in construction, fifty-five million, three-hundred-and-six thousand. Information Technology Projects, partially completed at four million, two-hundred-and-eighty, or four-hundred, two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars. Planning and general conditions, partially completed at seven million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars. Investment Future Capital Improvements, partially completed at twenty-four million, five-thousand. The Congress was currently in the Division of State Architects Office and at five million, six-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars. Our long-term obligations have been paid off and funds have been invested for future capital project improvements, technology projects, and instructional equipment. This completes my report. I thank your leadership, your vision, and your attention to improving our campus. Thanks.
Thank you. We now eleven-point-three Annual Report of the Retirement Board of Authority, RBOA.
Okay.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, President Zellit, Student Board Member, colleagues, members of the public. As you may be aware, the district established an irrevocable trust to pre-fund its OPEB other employment benefit liabilities. OPEB liabilities are the employer's share of benefit payments that are attributed to past employee service. Tonight's annual report will be presented via Zoom by Rosalind Washington from Keenan, which is the program administrator, Scott Rankin from Benefit Trust, which is our discretionary trustee, and Mark Payne, Morgan Stanley, which is the investment advisor to Benefit Trust. With that introduction, here is Rosalind Washington.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me clearly?
We can hear you. We cannot see you, Rosalind.
Okay, I think the moderator has turned my camera off.
Can we switch to the Zoom participants?
And can we get the slide deck on the screen, please? I can see it. It just, my screen is telling me that the host has stopped the video and, but I don't really need to be seen if you can, we can put the slide deck on the monitor. Okay, there we go. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Rosalind Washington. I'm with Keenan Financial Services. And as Shami indicated, we are the program administrator to your Section one fifteen trust for the OPEB plan. In two thousand and fifteen, the district did an RFP, and the Keenan program was selected to be the Section one fifteen administrator. We're going to give an overview of your annual OPEB trust on the call here with me. We have Scott Rankin. Scott Rankin is with Benefit Trust Company, and they are the discretionary trustee to the OPEB plan. We also have Mark Payne. Mark Payne is with Morgan Stanley, and he is the, Morgan Stanley is the investment advisor to Benefit Trust. Next slide, please. The Retirement Board of Authority is an oversight board that was selected based on title from the governing board here. There are three members of the Retirement Board of Authority. Michael Adams is the elected official on the governing board that is also on the Oversight Board here. We have Shamin DeBar. That's the VP of Administrative Services, the CBO. And a new member this year, we have Tamara Steffes, the Director of Fiscal and Financial Services. Next slide, please. Excuse me. The Retirement Board of Authority responsibilities include, includes a high-level oversight of the program, meaning they are the initial document signers. They are the authorized signers. They manage the influx of funds going into and out of the trust to cover any retiree health benefits. They adopt and execute the terms of the trust. The term agreement was established in two thousand and fifteen, and any changes that are done to the actual trust agreement are handled at the Retirement Board of Authority meetings that we meet twice a year. They adopt, they adopt the investment policy statement, and Scott may talk a little bit about that later. But the investment policy statement is the document that actually indicates the asset allocations or how you are, how your asset mix is determined based on stocks versus fixed income, stocks versus bonds. We require a Brown Act meeting, creating full transparency. And as I indicated, we meet twice a year, usually in the spring and then one time in the fall at the district. We meet in person. The RBOA also documents the due process, meaning they are the primary board members that come back and report all of the findings and any information specifically pertaining to the OPEB trust to you, the governing board, and that's what we're doing here tonight. Provides local control. The futurist structure also mitigates liability for the district and the Retirement Board of Authorities. Next slide, please. This is our team here. Our team has been together since two thousand and fifteen. We've actually all been together since the inception of our plan in two thousand and seven. The very members that are on this screen here are the same members that manage the trust on a regular basis for all of our clients. Keenan has two managing partners here. We have Gail Beal, who's the Senior Vice President of Keenan, and she's the primary manager of the entire futurist plan. And then myself, I am the day-to-day person that handles everything administratively directly with the district. Any, any information or any discussion or required documents typically comes through me. Then we have Benefit Trust Company. As I said, Benefit Trust Company is the discretionary trustee. So they have a contract with Keenan, the administrator, and they have a contract with the district. Then we have Morgan Stanley. Morgan Stanley is the investment consultant to Benefit Trust. So they are only contracted with Benefit Trust as their investment advisor. They are not contracted with the district. Next slide, please. This is the Irrevocable Trust Investment Performance, and I'm going to hand this over to Scott and let him talk about this.
Yes, good evening, everyone. For the, for the calendar year of two thousand and twenty-three, you began the year at a little over eight-point-three million. Through the course of the year, net contributions over three-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand. You also had market appreciation of over four-hundred-and-fifty thousand and dividends posted to the trust of over three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, which after deducting our program fees by the end of the year, your market value was at nine million, four-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-one dollars and eighty-seven cents. Your value as of today is nine million, six-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and twenty-two cents. As Roz mentioned, your investment policy statement dictates that allocation between stocks and bonds, and your trust is currently very conservatively invested. Target asset allocation of sixteen percent equities and eighty-four percent fixed income, which was a very good place to be, particularly during the down year of two thousand and twenty-two, where all assets lost significant market value. So the trust continues to be very well positioned for current market conditions. Next slide, please. This is a summary of portfolio returns since inception. And for the year of two thousand and twenty-three, the trust earned positive eight-point-seven-four percent, which gives it an annualized return since inception, which is June of two thousand and fifteen, of an average of four-point-four-one percent year. Below those numbers on this slide, you see a number of benchmarks. I'm going to ask Mark Payne from Morgan Stanley to comment on the benchmark.
Thanks, Scott. Hello, everyone. Yeah, I'll just go down the list here, down two thousand and twenty-three. Good year for both U.S. and international stocks. There are the S and P five hundred up twenty-six point two-seven percent. Interestingly, the bulk of that game came in the fourth quarter of last year. Interest rates hit their peak late October. The ten-year Treasury hit five percent. Since then, we pulled back on rates, led both stocks and bonds to have a really good fourth quarter. Next, you can see the EFE. This is international stocks. Two thousand and twenty-three ended up eighteen-point-eight-seven. Next is the Barclays Aggregate. This is all government bonds and investment-grade corporates, no munis and no high. This is all government bonds and investment-grade corporates, no munis and no high yield in here. Two thousand and twenty-three up five point five three. And last is Barclays Global. This is just global bond, same thing, up five point seven two.
Next slide, please. So the annual, uh, the trust is audited on an annual basis. So the audited irrevocable trust fund was, like Scott indicated, and this was at the end of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, was a little over eight point seven million dollars. There was no, uh, significant findings, so it was a clean audit. Next slide, please. Some of the accomplishments that we had, one of the services that Keenan provides, um, is we provide what's called a substantive plan. And that's where my team and I work together with the district, typically people in the Benefits Department. And we hand out a questionnaire at the end of every fiscal year, specifically asking what are the, uh, retiree health benefits that are offered in that particular fiscal year? And were there any changes that were made that were different than the prior fiscal year? So it, we always want to keep you in, um, informed exactly what benefits are at any given time of the year. So if there are any changes, like if your district moved from Blue Cross to Kaiser, that's information that my team and I will gather, and then we house all that information up into a, um, a flash drive, and we send that over to the district. And it's a very resourceful tool that the district can use by handing that flash drive over to the auditors. And it, it frees up some of the staff, some of the time that your staff has to use to collect all of that information. So we collect things like the bargaining agreements. When those change, we collect all of that data, and at the end of every calendar year, that's the information that we give back to the district. Um, so that's, that's some of our accomplishments we had. We met, we met, uh, twice this year. Um, and some of the discussions that we, we've had going forward, we're specifically about the trust, how the trust is doing. We give a market update on a regular basis. We send out an email to the District, uh, Board of Authority members on a monthly basis, always keeping, uh, the members abreast of what's going on in the current market conditions. Next slide, please. We're going to continue with those same goals this year. Uh, the district has typically made a deposit on a, a regular basis. You are basically fully funded, what we call fully funded, meaning you've met your old, your total OPEB obligation based on the, the data that is comprised with your actuary. So your actuary will use healthcare costs, other assumptions, and they gather that information and put it in a report that they provide to the district on an annual basis, letting you know, these are the funds that you're going to need to have in trust in order to meet that obligation of covering those retiree health benefits. So going forward, we're going to continue doing that same, uh, gift, that, that same type of service for the district. And then we're going to discuss, um, we always discuss at every meeting, now that you're fully funded, give us what, any time horizon that you have for the district to start making withdrawals from the trust, because the funds that are held in this trust are specifically and only for retiree health benefits. So when you get to the point where you're ready to make that pay-go payment, and you don't want to take it from your general fund, then, then you'll let us know, and then we'll, we'll, uh, set that up to have the funds be recouped from the trust. Next slide, please. That's it. Are there any questions for me and my team tonight?
Uh, yes, I have a question. On page, on page seven, at the bottom, you have the Barclays Bonds and domestic bonds and global bonds, and they're paying, uh, five point five three and five point seven two. Now, currently, the interest rate is five percent. Why don't we have some of these, uh, investments in, uh, CDs that are protected, uh, by the federal government and paying five percent interest?
Yeah, I can take that one. Uh, we put these portfolios together, so you have, you do have some treasury exposure in the portfolios. The portfolios are a little bit longer in duration on fixed income, so you have a lot of six-year duration bond funds with a yield to maturity right around six percent. Um, we have, um, taking on a little bit more credit exposure with corporate bonds, uh, NCD, just because you can earn a little bit more. It's more appropriate for this type of portfolio. Thank you. Great question.
Any further questions, Board members?
I just want to say, uh, thank you to Shami, to Rosalind, Scott, Mark. This is one of the better-run committees on campus. And if you told me back in two thousand and fifteen that we'd be fully funded by now, I would have been very shocked because we were, I think we were eight million and a hole at that point in time. So, uh, now that we're fully funded, uh, I think it's just a, a reflection on how well our financial advisors have done and, and the committee members as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you for your presentation. We are now to eleven point four, resignation of the Fresh Success Program.
Thank you. Um, for the board's information, this is a presentation that is pertinent to Action Item thirteen point two, uh, for the Contract for Educational Management Resource Group. I just wanted to give the board some background. Uh, could I please have the PowerPoint up? Wanted to give the board some background about this federal program that is operated through the state. Um, and it's an incentive program, an employment incentive program and training program for, uh, people who are in the CalFresh program, and the incentive is to get them into jobs training and employment certificates. Please go to the next slide. It's a federal employment training program. As you can see, uh, what this program does is it helps the college accomplish its mission, right? While helping students who are eligible for CalFresh and this kind of basic needs, uh, support helps them get this. By working in conjunction with this program, we can also alleviate some of the reporting pressures that currently exist for our students. So let me start by saying, this, this is work that we are already doing. This program actually helps subsidize the work that we're doing and bring in more dollars. Forty-five cents on every non-federal dollar that we're spending on basic needs can be brought back to the college to extend our basic needs funding. Please go to the next slide. So what are benefits for students? If they're enrolled in CalFresh and they're part of this program, the twenty-hour-per-week work requirement is waived. So school is treated as their work. The encouragement to get a certificate or get a degree, um, is incentivized by waiving that work requirement. And so this helps, um, helps them take more courses and get to their, their educational goals sooner. Uh, monthly reporting for those students, uh, right now, students who receive CalFresh benefits are required to report, um, information to the county each month to maintain their eligibility, and Fresh Success Program waives that requirement because the college collectively gathers data on our students enrolled in the program, and we batch report it for them. So, um, support services that go to the students are similar to EOPNS. There's counseling, course materials, um, fees for testing, for certification and things like that, particularly for our CTE programs. If there's equipment or supplies that they need that they can't afford, we can subsidize that. Uh, these are just some of the services that our, our students are eligible for. Please, next slide. So you can see here, um, this is small, so I apologize, but you do have it in front of you. You can see a schedule, uh, from a sample college that has implemented this over time. This is Santa Linda College. This is an actual college. So you can see what, uh, what their expenditures were, uh, the maximum federal dollars and the money that came back to the college. So, um, you can see that it's, it's, it's a, a gain to the college to subsidize the work. Provides forty-five cents on every dollar of non-federal funds. Has to be non-federal dollars because this is, uh, this program originates through, uh, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Food and Nutrition Services. So they don't want to double-dipping, double-dipping in federal dollars, which makes sense. Next slide, please. Here's what we're required to do. Uh, we, uh, we have ongoing training activities, and we help recruit students into the CalFresh program. Uh, we conduct Fresh Success outreach outreach to identify potential participants, and that doesn't have to be in reach. That can be outreach, and this can be part of a recruiting tool. We implement Fresh Success Program by providing the services, managing all of these program activities, and, and incorporating them into daily operations. And as I have said, the majority of these benefits are already being offered to students on campus. So the change for us would be some of the batch reporting and, and reporting of time. Because of the federal program, our employees who maybe are, are dedicating thirty percent of their time, they, they fill out, um, uh, quarterly time reporting sheets, and we, it's, it's just a training, uh, sort of thing, and we make that record keeping and reporting part of our regular practice. And then we invoice and certify allowable costs and submit them for reimbursement. Uh, next slide, please. So this is what we submit quarterly for reimbursement. Sign time records, payroll and benefits detail, backing up the time records, uh, that are submitted. Uh, we provide invoice, uh, through an Excel workbook, uh, workbook invoicing for eligible reimbursements, additional staff roles if applicable, if we bring anybody on to help, and then assign provider invoice. And the contract that the board will be, uh, hopefully approving, that we're asking for board approval tonight, is for the templates and the training from Educational Management Resource Group. Uh, they have put together this, this, more colleges are implementing this plan now by using this consultancy. Uh, there's no upfront cost to the college. Educational Management Resource Group takes a small percentage of the, the money that comes back to the college for while, uh, the duration of the training time and for, uh, adopting their template. And so it's a limited timeframe that we can track with them, but the program goes on, and we're able to get this benefit for our students and extend our basic needs dollars. Next slide, please. So here's where we are. Uh, I have already, uh, submitted a letter of intent, letter of interest, and we are, these, some of these things are kind of, we have not implemented the training plan, employee, employment and training plan. We will be doing that after, uh, the board approves the contract. So these are tasks to complete and not necessarily in any order. Um, the, I suppose bullet point two will happen, and thereon will, uh, will happen after the contract approval tonight. Next slide, please. Are there any questions from the board?
I guess. How many students are going to be or, or impacted by this program?
Uh, we have not implemented the program yet, so we, we don't have a, a hard number. We know that many of our students already in EOPNS, Trio, those programs are already enrolled in CalFresh. And so immediately, those students who are eligible for the program would be able to be incorporated into this, and then some of the, uh, relief that the students find, like, uh, ease of reporting and that kind of thing, the students would be able to immediately reap those benefits.
Okay, um, how many employees of a college be involved in implementing the program?
Great question. So right now, um, Dr. Zimmerman, uh, in her new role, uh, she will be, she's maintaining the supervision of basic needs, and so she's spearheading this. And part of this i- is a little bit of a, a push and pull. We need to see how big the program potentially can grow. And some of the, uh, and, and what kind of, of person power will be required for the reporting. Some of this data is already gathered for certain categorical programs, and so it might be a matter of consolidating data that we already grab. Or it could mean that we, we need to assign, um, it depends on how big the program gets. So I apologize if these are not super specific answers, but we're, we're at early phases.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, I have a question. Okay, so the batch reporting, let's say a student attends the college now through January first. But the batch is reported, let's say in March, that this student is still attending, still on CalFresh. Who pays for that, say? So, it's quarterly reporting, and so we're not actually get, we're not getting money in advance. So right now, the college is already investing in those students. So if we were to submit, whatever we get from them is in arrears, and it's forty-five cents on the eligible dollar. And it makes a lot of sense. What I'm trying to get to is the penalty for the person to be participating in the program. Like, is there any penalty for non-participation?
So it, uh, so to make sure I understand your question, if they stop out early, like maybe don't complete a whole quarter. I see, um, those are the reporting rules that we have yet to be trained on. I would guess that if you don't complete the full quarter, they don't necessarily make it into the report. And I would also wager that there would be an opportunity for us to correct mistakes. Like, if a mistake was made here, we could correct it here, and it, the compensation would be fixed. If that makes, I.
No, it does, it does make a lot of sense. It makes perfect, good sense, actually. And I really commend you for monetizing the practice that you're already doing. My only concern about this, and to be honest, my hesitation about it, I don't want someone to stop attending classes and lose their benefit for food.
Understood.
So that's something I think we should think about, and I think I.
We can bake that into the, 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 um, because they do have to have conferences, like with EOPNS, it's a comp, uh, we, I threw that comparison in there because we tend to understand they have to have, uh, counseling at least twice a semester, right? And so bake those appointments is the reminder that i- if you, if you stop going to school, you now are back into the reporting for CalFresh of, you know. And, and make sure that we usher students through those to make part of our checklist.
Yeah, so those transitions will be built in to make sure that the students aren't at loss of food at any point on participation in this one. Yes, ma'am. Okay, that's excellent. Thank you so much for that. I really appreciate that. We are now to twelve, the consent agenda. May I have a motion?
Sure.
Discussion? Vote?
Trustee Rivera?
Approved.
Trustee Gaines?
Approved.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams? Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thirteen point one is twenty-three, twenty-four, Board of Trustees Self-Evaluation. Um, we all have the report of our self-evaluation. I would ask the board to look at that for a second. Um, are there any questions relative to, uh, the twenty-three, twenty-four, self-evaluation? No question. All right, thank you. Thirteen point two, approval of con- Oh. Sorry. Motion to accept? Discussion? Vote?
Trustee Rivera?
Approved.
Trustee Gaines?
Approved.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams? Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Thirteen point two is approval of consultation agreement between Educational Management Resource Group, EMRG and Antelope Valley College for Development Implementation of Fresh Success Program. May I have a motion?
So much.
Discussion? Vote?
Trustee Rivera?
Approved.
Approved.
Aye.
Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Thirteen point three, we have a comment card for Mr. Hell.
Good evening. Numerous faculty have expressed to me their concern about the number and size of legal contracts that the district has with, that the district has. Uh, and while they may very well be necessary from time to time, uh, I think the issue is kind of twofold. One is, of course, that this is monies that can be spent for education or other good purposes. Uh, but the second one is that this really speaks to an environment at our college that, uh, I don't think any of us appreciate. No offense to the lawyers in the room, but when the lawyers get involved, it's, yeah, sorry, Bridget, it's usually not a good thing. And usually, it's leading toward. And usually it's leading toward an outcome that a lot of times, a lot of us really, like nobody wants. So I'm, all of us have a role in trying to help resolve the problems or the conflicts that we have at the college. But I'm here to ask the board and the administration to do their part, your parts, to make sure as much as possible that we can avoid the use of legal remedies. Because that's the college we all want to be a part of. Thank you.
Thank you. Three point three, correction of June tenth, twenty twenty-four board communication. It was agenda item number fourteen point fifteen, approval of services agreement between Angela J. Reddick, a professional law corporation, and Antelope Valley College for mediation services. May I have a motion?
Please.
Discussion?
Yes. You wanted to, the agreements with a law firm. And I'm sorry, I didn't mark which one it was. But it mentioned that the, if I'm mistaken, teachers federation would be billed. Part of the, is that correct?
It is correct and it's abiding by the collective bargaining agreement. When the federation and the district go to mediation, the federation pays out.
Okay. On this thirteen point three, because Angela Reddick, and I told you last time, I really, I was one of the people in the campaign that defeated her for the community college board and all that. I'm looking, I'm staying. Thank you.
Trustee Reeves, just so that you're aware, I've looked into that issue. There are no issues with you voting. It's the expectation of the public that voted, elected you. And you will vote on all matters unless there's an actual conflict. The fact that you may have participated in matters when she, when Ms. Reddick was a trustee, this is unrelated to her role as a trustee and is only, or you would be voting on the district's and the federation's use of her service as a mediator. Has nothing to do with her serving as a trustee on another community college district board, so.
Oh, legally, I can. No conflict.
There's no, yeah, there's no problem for you and I apologize for not having the conversation.
Was involved in the campaign and. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook, and that's why it's important for the board to have attorney. May we have a vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Thirteen point four, approval to addendum number one of agreement between Began Friedman and Bull Frost Allen, PF three law, and Antelope Valley Community College District, A, B, C, C, D, for professional legal services. May I have a vote? I'm sorry, may I have a motion?
Hold on a second.
Discussion? The vote?
Trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams. Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Thirteen five, approval of amendment number two to the professional services agreement between Christopher W. Hind, DBA Law Office of C.W. Hind, and Antelope Valley Community College to extend the term of the agreement and update the rate of payment. May I have a motion? Second. Discussion? The vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Thirteen point six, am I correct? Okay, thank you. Approval of amendment number two to the professional services agreement between Walter Johnson and Associates, Inc., and Antelope Valley Community College to extend the term of the agreement and update the rate of payment. May I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Thirteen seven, approval of amendment number two to the contract between the County of Los Angeles and Antelope Valley Community College District for out-of-classroom coordination services. May I have a motion? Second. Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Thirteen eight, approval of clinical affiliation agreement between Ridge Press Regional Hospital and Antelope Valley Community College for clinical experience in respiratory care and radiologic technology through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. So move.
So move.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carrying.
Thirteen point nine, approval of program mapper, onboarding and licensing agreement between the Foundation for California Community Colleges and Antelope Valley Community College District. May I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Thirteen ten, approval of contract instruction agreement between APICS, San Fernando Valley Chapter Number One Ten, Inc., and Antelope Valley College Palmdale Center Extended Learning and Workforce Development. May I have a motion?
Move.
Second. Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Thirteen eleven, approval of consultant agreement for foster and kinship care education. May I have a motion? So move. Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Thirteen twelve, approval of consultant services agreement between Eileen Webb, DBA, accreditation, accreditation preparation in Antelope Valley Community College District to provide consulting services for first-time A, B, T accreditation of airframe manufacturing technology badge program. May I have a motion?
So move.
Discussion? Woo-hoo. Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carrying.
Thirteen thirteen, approval to renew contract with Los Angeles County Office of Education for the People's Soft Financial System and HRS system from July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. May I have a motion?
So move.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carrying.
Thirteen fourteen, approval of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five athletic fall sports schedule for men and women's sports. May I have a motion? So move.
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carrying.
Thirteen fifteen, approval of services agreement with Antelope Valley Partners for Health, ABPH, and Antelope Valley College for wraparound services to support students who are experienced in housing and security. May I have a motion? So move. Discussion?
Yes. Does it mean that we are going to provide housing?
This is not permanent housing. This is emergency housing situations for students who are. This is not a contract with a hotel. This is with a public health.
The vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Thirteen sixteen, approval of consultant services agreement between MD Rich Consulting, Inc. and Antelope Valley Community College to provide sexual assault prevention training for students. May I have a motion?
So move.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Thirteen seventeen, approval to purchase software from Foundation for Community Colleges for student support and instruction. May I have a motion?
So move.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Thirteen eighteen, approval to amend agreement with Los Angeles SMSA Limited Partnership, DBA Horizon Wireless through January thirty-first, twenty thirty-one. May I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Thirteen nineteen, approval of project assignment amendment, PAA revision number one to Beacon's Movement Solution, Inc., for administrative services, emergency move project with catastrophic event funds. May I have a motion?
So move.
Discussion?
Yes. I thought we were all moved into.
But we are moved into the administration building, but sometimes the, the finalization of all of the business arrangements take months even after the event occurs. So this is a result of the water intrusion into the administration building. We're finalizing all of the, all of the contracts and all of the payments with the people that work with it.
Great.
Student trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Thirteen twenty, approval to award bid number ABC twenty twenty-three slash twenty twenty-four dash twelve for discovery, discovery lab one twenty, non-destructive testing lab bid with strong workforce funds. May I have a motion?
So move.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves. Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carrying.
Thirteen point two one, authorization to award bid for number ABC twenty twenty-three slash twenty twenty-four dash nine eight for carpet signage and paint project. Number twenty-two dash zero zero eight to CTG Construction, Inc., doing business as CT. Georgia Rock. Painting company with scheduled maintenance funds. May I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves. Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Thirteen twenty-two, approval of fill contractor services with Reyes and Sun Electric for gym raceway for network and fire alarm with scheduled maintenance funds. May I have a motion?
So move.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves. Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Thirteen point two three, approval of fill contract for services with black box network services for the fiber installation to the gymnasium with scheduled maintenance funds. May I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves. Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carrying.
Why don't we group thirteen point twenty-four and twenty-five together? May I have a motion?
So move.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo. Trustee Adams. Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Thirteen point two six through thirteen point three two, I believe, is measure A V funds. May I have a motion?
So move.
Discussion?
Yes. Thirteen point twenty-eight, approval of service agreement to move the Douglas Skyrocket with measure A V funds. We haven't contracted out to build the commons yet. Shouldn't that be part of the common budget?
It is part of the measure A V budget, but the contractors who build the commons, we would not use to move the Douglas Skyrocket.
And where is that going to be moved that our president's?
Being relocated to the Finston area next to our auto shop, auto body courses. And the company that we are asking authorization to enter into business with, I wrote down some of their common, their past work history because I anticipated people being very curious. They have moved Air Force One from San Bernardino to the Ronald Reagan Library. They erected the orbiter lifting facility, enabling NASA to load the Space Shuttle Endeavor for transport from Palmdale nearby to Kennedy Space Center in Florida. So they have a lot of experience working in the aerospace industry. They understand the composite material that the plane is constructed from, how you can and cannot move it, and cannot move it, kind of supports that it needs and the care. They absolutely respect the care that this historical artifact deserves. So we are very pleased with their list of accomplishments and their preparation to deal with this in the appropriate manner.
Is that going to be a permanent move?
It's going to move there until we devise a plan for restoration and then we have a conversation about its permanent location.
Great. Trustee Reeves, thank you so much for asking that question. But trust me, I'd already asked, the skyrocket is really important to this company. So I'm glad we're getting it with really solid professionals. May we have the vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approved.
Trustee Gaines.
Approved.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Fourteen is our information items. I would like for you to look over those. We're going to move to fifteen, reports and announcements, Academic Senate, Mr. Howell Hunsman.
Good evening, trustees, President Zelik, Ms. Cook, and Ms. McClure. This month I'd like to highlight the work of one of our newer faculty members, Dr. Francisco Fuentes. He is our one and only Ethnic Studies faculty member. And he comes to a college that had really no Ethnic Studies courses. We did have one course, we still have the one course that was approved for Ethnic Studies, transfer credit to the C S U's, but no actual Ethnic Studies courses. And he has, in the last year, created, well, updated three courses and created six new ones, four of which have been approved for transfer credit to the C S U's. It's actually a remarkable achievement because the approval process is arduous and we're still working on the others, but it's a big deal. And by the way, I do want to also give a special shout out there to Dr. Jessica Eaton, our articulation officer, who's worked really closely with him and without which that wouldn't have happened. But I also, to go on a little bit more about Dr. Fuentes, because of the changes in the G E requirements happening in the state, Ethnic Studies is going to be a course that almost every student who transfers will need to be taking. What that means is it will kind of be like what Communication Studies has been. Currently, I think we typically have forty or fifty sections of Community Communication Studies per semester. We have had no Ethnic Studies courses essentially. And so what Dr. Fuentes has been tasked with doing, and he's now, I think the title is Assistant Department Chair. I'm not sure exactly what the title is, but he's basically building a whole department, bringing in as many faculty, mostly adjunct at this time, but hopefully full-time in the future as the need continues to arise. But we could have literally dozens of Ethnic Studies courses on the books in the coming years and he's really spearheading that charge. So just want to highlight his work and look forward to talking with you again next month.
Thank you. And Low Valley Federation, Dr. Jason Bowen.
Thank you, everyone, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, President Zelik, Ms. McClure, Ms. Cook. First, I'd like to simply remind the board that we have a faculty member who remains on paid administrative leave and has been on administrative leave since last September, and they have not received an update regarding their reinstatement. If you do plan to reinstate them, then I hope that it would be done soon so they could prepare for their classes because if they're reinstated just before the start of the semester, then the students will suffer from being ill-prepared. So they'll benefit greatly if they know they're going to return and then they can prepare because they take their job seriously. I enjoyed the presentation at the start of the meeting. It demonstrated what we can achieve with our students when we have dedicated and vested employees. So congratulations to all the students who've improved their GPAs. That was some good news that I was happy to hear and see. An adjunct faculty member was recently released without cause abruptly. It was unanticipated, brutal, ruthless, disrespectful, contemptuous, and hateful. Despite the considerable value they brought to their program and bring to the community, including the impact they've had on their students, with some of the students, no doubt, having expressed some of their concerns to some of you sitting here this evening. April seventy-one twenty, our board policy, your parlay policy, states the adjunct faculty member will remain in the pool unless the district part-time faculty evaluation procedure results in a recommendation to the Vice President of Human Resources and Employee Relations or his or her designate that the adjunct faculty member will be dropped from the pool. This policy protects adjunct faculty from abuse of a right granted by the California Education Code. You all agree to this policy. Adjunct faculty are already assaulted from numerous directions, low pay, low job security, low benefits, even with high scores on their evaluations, as has been the case with this particular faculty, and commitment to serving the students. The presentation at the beginning of tonight's meeting emphasized the need for employees and faculty to apply, come, stay, and invest in our incredible institution for a hundred years, if possible. The students benefit from these treasures, yet we're running off the very people who make all the success and self-discovery possible for our students. My hope is that this decision that was made recently is reversed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bowen. We now have fifteen-three, and Low Valley College Federation of Classified Employees is now report. The report is not here, okay. Fifteen-four, confidential management supervisory administrator employees, Ashley Clark. Ashley, I've seen your name on some brutally wonderful stuff.
Good evening, everyone. The C M S A Group has experienced quite a busy and eventful month, notably Dr. Zimmerman being honored as the Woman of the Year from the SALVA organization. And Dean Mitchell stepping in as the Dean of LACCA has provided quite a bit of ease in that division. These achievements highlight the remarkable leaders that we have on our campus. With the reorganization taking effect on July first, our team has shown unparalleled flexibility. This has included the combining of programs for efficiency, relocating offices to better support students and staff, and realigning divisions and departments. Throughout these changes, the C M S A Group has maintained a steadfast commitment to serving our students and staff in the most effective way possible. We are hard at work planning leadership training this summer as well as creating some internal training opportunities across campus to leverage all of the expertise that we have right here. I am incredibly proud to be a member of this dedicated group and to continue to contribute to our ongoing success in serving students. It's a pleasure to be with you.
Thank you. Associated Student Organization, Renee Will.
Hi, oh, sorry, let's sit close. Hi, board, thank you for this opportunity to talk to you guys on my report on what A S O has been achieving and being up to in the past days. So we decided on our goals to, we decided to keep last year's goals of awareness, student engagement, and opportunity. We also do want to focus on the year of being informative and keeping students informative. And also we decided to even keep in mind of A B C serves. We're also going to be cleaning the Conex that's out there. I actually don't know where it is, but on July twelfth, we will be, but it has been really hot. So we did plan to clean the shed July fifth, but we had to cancel that due to the heat and we might have to do it again. It's been really hot. Also, we're going to be doing Brown Act training for our cabinet, the entire A S O. So that'll be July twenty-sixth, after our meeting that day. We also have two standing committees made. We have the Club Rush Committee, which, Club Rush is an event that many clubs would come together and present themselves to students passing by to try and get more members or just try to get what they're about out there. We have that every beginning fall and spring semester, so we have a committee to plan that. And then we also have a Code of Integrity Committee that will be deciding how A S O adds on inside the organization because it's not written in our constitution and we believe that would be needed. We also went to a Korean barbecue restaurant June twenty-fifth, or June twenty-sixth, sorry. It was a transitional dinner for the old cabinet to welcome in the new and for many of A S O to interact with each other and get to know each other to work better and have better results. It was very fun, the food was great. And we have five positions left, three executive positions and two senators. Only one executive position will be swearing in, the rest will be held off until the fall semester. And then we also participated in Reg Fest that was held at the S S B. We think it was a great success and everybody that was there. We also have a new event coming up hopefully soon. The date's not been decided yet, but it is a hydration promotion event that will be, we'll be passing out water bottles to students because again, it's been so hot, so we want to give them a chance to, one, learn about A S O and also keep themselves hydrated. You know, a lot of people don't take care of themselves. And then that would, and then, yeah, that's it.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that. And Low Valley College Foundation, Diane Knipple. Okay. Fifteen-seven, Office of the Superintendent President, Dr. Zelik.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate Cody Turner and Kayla Thompson one more time. I'm so proud of our student athletes who are able to manage life and manage school and still be such excellent competitors. They're shining example to us all. Good evening, trustees and student trustee. I want to begin by thanking all of our classified professionals whose jobs take them outdoors. We are in a heat wave that makes working in facilities and maintenance and operations a challenge. So I encourage you, all of them, to care for themselves while they're working, drink plenty of water, get in the shade as needed, and know that all of us deeply, deeply appreciate your commitment to your job. During July, we celebrate Disability Pride Month. This July marks the thirty-fourth anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, which paved the way for inclusion and removing barriers. How does A B C remove barriers for our students who are differently abled? In the S S B, there's an entire office dedicated to access, success, and completion of our students who have different requirements. Formerly known as O S D, or the Office for Students with Disabilities, the faculty, staff, and director are recommending to the campus a new name, Academic Accommodation Center. This proposed change in nomenclature reflects the services that are offered and highlights the benefits students glean from utilizing their services. Many thanks to Carlos Rosas, John Wenko, Tamira Palmetto, Maricela Ruval-Caba, Anne Loy, Harry Pleer, and others whose names I do not know, for your dedication to the students who are differently abled. Thank you. I also want to thank Professor Dan Humphrey for regularly inviting me to his Deaf Studies classes. He shared with me a book that they read about Gallaudet University and the Deaf President Now movement. And I have learned much from reading alongside them and listening to what is now three sections of students talk to me about their student experience at A B C. I'm grateful he invites me into that space and I'm even more grateful to learn how to better serve this population of our students. Thank you, Professor Humphrey, for creating this partnership and paving a path of communication. As we celebrate Disability Pride Month, remember to thank those who are already serving this population of students. If you want to know how to join them, start a brave conversation. As James Baldwin said, "Love takes off the masks we fear we cannot live without and know we cannot live within." I'd like to give a shout out to the folks in Student Services who made the June twenty-sixth Reg Fest such a success, that day of solid work increased the head count by six hundred and eighty-four students and the F T S by three hundred and forty-four. Your work is seen, it is valued, and it is clearly rewarded. Thank you. Finally, I will close by saying happy birthday and thanking our General Counsel for all that she does. She has chosen to spend her birthday evening with us at a board meeting, ensuring that all goes smoothly for the good of the district and the community. Thank you, Bridget, and happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
We will now have comments from our board members. President Rivera.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to congratulate the student athletes. It was very impressive what they accomplished as well as the increases in GPA. Shout out to our athletics department doing great things all the time. And know that we love to go watch their games. I especially enjoy the volleyball teams. Not too sure what Steve enjoys, but. And then not much else, but happy birthday to General Counsel Cook. Another. Nothing else for it, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you so much. Trustee Gaines.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to give a shout out to our student athletes. I think we don't understand sometimes how much work they put in, not only on the field or on the court, but in maintaining those grade point averages. And I was very impressed with the grade point averages and the fact that they are stellar at their sport. That speaks a lot about our coaches, our student athletes, and our athletic directors. So thank you very much for recognizing them this evening. Mr. Hunsman, I'm going to apologize because I'm trying to find out who the gentleman was who did the Ethnic Studies work. I would very much like to, Ethnic Studies is not only a requirement here, but it's now become a requirement by a certain year at all of, all of the high schools. Every high school student must graduate with at least one semester in Ethnic Studies. And we're, we're, we're jumping in with all fours next, this fall, to make sure that all of our incoming freshmen have one semester of Ethnic Studies. So I would love to meet that professor, and I'm sorry, I forgot his name. I couldn't, I was trying to get help from my, my partners here to the left and right, but maybe you can share his name with me again. I'd really appreciate that. It's always great to see when Antelope Valley College is, takes the lead on something such as Ethnic Studies because we've been working on it for a year and we really don't know. Are we, are we doing what we should be doing? Have we adopted the right curriculum, et cetera? So I would love to have that conversation with our professor here. And I also want to say to our wonderful Bridget, happy birthday. And, you know, we could check out that Korean barbecue, you know, it's not too late. Happy birthday, Bridget, and thank you for everything you do. That's it for me.
Okay, trustee Reeves.
Happy birthday, Bridget. And I want to thank President Zelik and Patty for providing a big binder of all the rules, regulations, everything on the college. That's a dream come true, and I don't know if they realize what they've done, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everybody stays cool and has a good evening.
Trustee Buffalo.
Well, great to see our athletic department is maintaining the cutting edge. And I think that started a long time ago with Brett Carter when he was here and started a lot of scholar-athlete programs. And now it continued on and it's kind of gone on steroids and that's a really, really cool thing. And I would hope we would match that in other areas. I think we are in some areas doing very well. I think it's open to do special things and great things and don't let yourself be inhibited by N A S A. As far as the rest of it, I happened to have a conversation with four or five people the other day at the college, actually, it was about a week ago. And it's amazing the things they were saying about the buildings, facilities, the students that they know who have gone here or the family members, and so many positives out there and we need to keep echoing those positives. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Adams.
And happy birthday, Bridget. I'm the one who's the esports guy because I do go to Starbucks every now and then. And like every time I go to the window, I do have my A B C hat on most of the time. I always get a clutch of greestas who are interested in the esports programs. And so they always ask when I'm there and I think it depends on how, how good my drink is on the answer I give them. So it is, it is out there in the community, there's a lot of interest in that, so I'm glad that we're pursuing that. And I am a statistics guy with sports programs and, and I knew Cody was having a good season, but I had stopped really looking at his individual stats at one point. And I think it's just, I just pulled up his season stats. Thirty games played, his average was four ninety, nine home runs, sixty-six R B I's, eleven stolen bases, never caught stealing, twenty-six walks. I think. Honey, I have some competition in about two or three years. Just incredible stats for, and I can see why his name stayed out there, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Adams. I would like to remind you that our next board meeting is August twelfth and we will see you then. We are not reconciling to close session, therefore our meeting is over. Have a good evening.